All right, it's 10:45, we're back in session. We're back on for agenda. We have Chaelen Jobeville. And you have other people with you, for the record, if you can speak please, state names. Okay?
We just got a handout, I assume that's from you?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Not the United States, but just like this. Commissioner Winters, thank you. Again, Chaelen Jobeville from Summer Lake, Oregon. Today I am here to represent the Fort Rock Silver Lake Soil and Water Conservation District. I'd like to go ahead and state the record. Well, before I start that, as you have recently informed, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife had a public land acquisition proposal to buy a piece of property, private land, in Summer Lake, Oregon. And that recently fell through, they are no longer pursuing that piece of property. We would like to go on to, as Fort Rock Silver Lake Soil and Water Conservation District would like to go on public record to formally state that we oppose all public land acquisitions in Lake County. And we would also like to emphasize the expectations that a letter of opposition or support of public land acquisitions by the Board of Commissioners should be reflected about by the Board of Commissioners as a board, not individual commissioners. And we feel that this is an opportunity to become involved as part of this process. We know that there will be future acquisition proposals. And so, we feel that from what we've learned in this past acquisition, that there are some things that we can improve on. And we would like to request the Board of Commissioners to sign a Lake County Planning Commission, along with Darlin Johnson, Lake County Planning Director, to review the current Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Before you, as a handout, I have page 24, I'm 1516. That speaks specifically to public land acquisitions. And some language alluded to some of the steps that need to take place for that. And so, we'd like to just have some clarification on interpretation of what I'm 1516. And Commissioner Winters, would you mind?
Number 15 states that the county would generally discourage any additional public acquisitions of private lands, unless justifiable to the county. Number 16 states that prior to any potential private land acquisition by a public agency, a recommendation will be requested from the county regarding this action.
And this was basically allowing the planning commission, we feel that they're the most appropriate body. And again, this would be the opinion of the Fort Rock Silver Lake Soil and Water Conservation District. We feel that that, the planning commission would be the most appropriate body at this point in time to really review the language that you just read. And to come up with recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for approval or adoption on how or the steps taken for future public land acquisitions. And again, just establishes a process and recommendations for the interpretations of our current guidelines. So, with that said, I would like to just gauge where you as the Board of Commissioners are on that. Is that something that you feel would be inappropriate next step? Just looking at everything like that? Do you go to the planning commission?
So, I just get down in the weeds a little bit, Chaelen. You're trying to make this a global, one shoe fits all. In the commissioners' world, on public land or private land acquisition by the publics, us as the Board of Commissioners, not this board, but myself and the board being the Board of Commissioners and the governing board for OSHA extension, have taken public land and put it into government ownership. We purchased the building for a debt. Through the Extension Service, we purchased the building for the Extension Service through taxpayers' dollars. So, we put one shoe fits all. Doesn't really fit. You know, I'm pretty much for your end. I don't think there needs to be any more private land to the public sector. But in our world, some flexibility for those cases that come up like that are almost needed. So, I think you're trying to get it so it's better. I absolutely not, I don't think. Each one is sort of different. I did not support the act of the land there. The land itself, you know that. So, yeah. There can be some nuances.
Yeah. And Commissioner Winters, I feel that, yeah, we're both on the same page when it comes to there will be unique examples that do come up. And it's not just, you know, one size fits all type of approach. I think specifically, where I would like the road, Fort Rock Silver Lake Soil and Water Conservation District would like to go with this, would be to just formalize a process so that there are boxes that we can check off. And that it formalizes, there is no confusion from the public standpoint or the FNU standpoint, if it's so the FNU or any publications in the future or could be the county.
Okay, and so, and you would like that to be driven and approached that being the primary?
Yeah, I think as an initial step, the Soil and Water District feels that the planning commission, with as engaged they are with the planning guidelines and the document in general, they would have the background and understanding to provide a recommendation of what, or maybe some options of what process, what they're applying. Of course, that would be a recommendation. Those recommendations or options would be presented to the Board of Commissioners or individually, whatever you would like to see.
I'm going to get down in the weeds a little bit more. One of the things we see here, which is going in the direction that I think you would support, is that we see special interests or nonprofits purchasing private lands and then donating them to government agencies. That can happen. Would you want that to be short of in here for the private lands? Do you donate? Is that too far? Can you go that far?
Well, certainly, I guess would be one avenue, if someone considers.
Well, that's what I was going to get on. Because I'm working on a deal right now where there's a special interest group posing as a ranch. I'll talk to you more about it. I don't want to mention the name, that's public right now. But there's a special interest group posing as a ranch. Right here, in this area. And they're out of Kansas. But come to find out, they're not out of Kansas anymore. They're out of New Jersey. And I just did some more work on this yesterday. They're posing as a ranch in Oregon. And what I think they're going to do is buy branches, they've already bought a ranch right here in the Fort Rock area, from a Fort Rock person that hasn't had a clue that they were sold to a special interest group. And what's happening is, is they're going to go to the BLM and say, "I don't want these grazing rinds anymore." And once you relinquish those grazing rinds, you can never get them back. And so, if your deal, I mean, if your track is right, that we need to have something that you can't it's got to be up to the board whether we say, "This is all right" or not. Because Brad's right. Like, if we need a little help building, you know, if we need, we want to make a park, say, somewhere, we should be able to say, come to the public and say, "Do you guys want a park?" And we can do that. Because if we do it so cut and dry and say, "No, we can't do a public thing." But if we have a special interest group that says, "Oh, I'm a ranch, I'm going to donate this." But they're really not, you know, it's a wolf in sheep's clothing. We need to be able to find out about this stuff because, you know, it's pretty shaky ground.
Well, I think they're forming for improvements in the actual plan, maybe to update this a little bit. And I'm willing to hear anything that the planning commission has in mind at the planning department. So, you guys, in my opinion, I think I really like where this is going. And just to evaluate what our options are moving forward for the county. And if we need to bring this up to date, clarify things a little bit, just solidify exactly where the county stands. What our role is in playing in this. And if someone does have an acquisition code, and okay, we might not rule it entirely out, so we can make an acquisition of private land. We won't necessarily rule that acquisition out. But it needs to be presented formally to the Board of Commissioners. And it needs to be justified. I think it stays a little bit in here, but I think some of the work I'm going to get will be.
Just like with your guys' deal down in Summer Lake. I was 100% against it. You know how I look at that. But on the other hand, if somebody wants to do something that helps the public, but that one, I was 100%. Like this ranch posing in something else. I'm 100% against that.
If you have any entity that's posing with a dummy corporation buying a private land with an intent to actually take it out of the private individuals' hands, that's a major concern for us as a county. Not only does that affect our tax base, but that affects all sorts of things in the longevity and future of the county. So, I think we're right on board with where you guys are going.
I think you're doing a great thing.
Are we looking for actual consensus at the board?
Well, I'm not going to go back over it because we really went too far. Yeah, that's a
Sorry.
Well, I live that direction. There's some legalities and everything that come to private property rights and all those things that we're talking mostly here today. For the planning commission and for this, I wish our director was here and you are, Commissioner yourself. The process has to be looked at. We can talk to Darlin and we can find out what the process is. And whenever we open up that process, I'm pretty sure there's a coherent process. There's opportunity for a lot of people bringing in public comment, a lot of things to be considered, and other things to be written in here from every group. So, we want to find out what the process is, what the realities are. It may sound like it's a travesty, some flexibility in there. Also, at the same time, I can't speak to exactly what the process is. And your office has a land use side of it. You said it in land use. So, we'll find out on that. Politically, you get to us and Board of Commissioners, and we can make our statements and everything. You're going to sometimes get very different ideas, very different things. And that's as real as politics. The Board of Commissioners can change, it doesn't matter. But do you want to go to the planning? You might go to land use side, or do you want this to?
Yeah, I guess that this, maybe to be more specific, it would be maybe more to get, I guess, clarification and bioprotection at this point in time. In the future, when we have a public acquisition proposal comes in, what will that look like? What will need to happen? Not only from the public's standpoint, the public agency, but from the county's standpoint? What is the order that this is like? Is that that public agency going to Darlin to get this information and thoughts first? Would be the first point on that, or would be coming to a formal level meeting? So, I think I may be just talking at that level right now. Based on what is our current language right now, what is the interpretation of getting clarification?
Okay, and just trying to reflect back, there's a process at higher levels. They have to bring it to the Board of Commissioners through this. They haven't made so many meetings, I believe. So, I'm very willing to look at this. It's just part of me looking and part of me really asking. You know, I guess, Chaelen, this is, can we open up our plan? Or can we set by policy of a procedural way land acquisitions? Is it only federal land? Is it state land? Is it county land? You know, all inclusive? So, you're hitting all kinds of different places.
I suppose all those things can be clarified, though, whatever recommendation you present before us. I don't, I think what you're asking right now is very early stages, looking to do a lot of the light work and just researching exactly what the process is and going about bringing the recommendation for the board. And actually, if, say, for instance, as an example, if it is just updating our comprehensive code of plan, what the process is to do that. And, I mean, it can always be rejected, it can be revised, it can go back. And once we bring those questions in.
Or maybe we just keep what we have, and then there'll be clarification on the interpretation.
Correct, yeah. So, just moving forward, maybe there just needs to be clarification. If there was no clarification needed, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But maybe the conversation needs to be had. So, this is really good.
So, one avenue of getting there would be for us to put together a committee to bring a recommendation in. Or we could use the planning commission as that committee to make that recommendation. And I believe we have to go through two hearing processes and change all this. So, I think that would be probably our first step is to figure out who we want, what we want to bring to the table. Look at this. Research it, put together directions that they would like to go bring it to the Board of Commissioners for a recommendation for us to take into consideration. That's where I'm sort of going to right now. That right there. Is that similar to what you're talking, and you're thinking the planning commission is?
Yeah.
With these out?
Yep, and open that up to the other Soil and Water Directors that are here. They would like to say anything at this time, but that was my interpretation and conclusion, I believe.
So, I would make sure you guys get a chance to speak.
From our standpoint, I'm the chairman of the board, Leroy Horton. It's a big question there about the water rights on that land. And it wasn't being used properly. And it was agriculture water rights. And now we were going to change them for another use. And maybe they weren't even being used for the proper as they were designed to be used to begin with. So, nobody addressed any of that. So, there's where we're coming from.
And this is in regards to the Edmonds property? Specifically, that mess, that in itself ends?
Yes, and as you well know, all water is governed by the state of Oregon and that. If somebody's not using their water rights appropriately and everything, there's an avenue to follow up on that. We can try to bring the water master in and help you get it to the table.
We haven't had a lot of luck with our local water master lately. So, you're probably familiar with that, or something going on there, but it was done too quick for people to take a look at it.
So, we haven't been able to get with Brian here lately. And there's still an issue with the water rights there?
Shaylin, can you answer that one?
I can, yeah. Yes, the local water master has been made aware. I believe a site visit did take place approximately two weeks ago. And so, he has seen some of the issues that have been brought out through this process. At this point in time, I don't know where that is going. I know the current landowner, from what I was told by an ODF employee, is that that individual was going to put the property on the open market for sale. So, I don't know that we'll have a full resolution until a new owner comes in. I don't know where that stands at this point in time with that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you can see what that is. I could speak on that a little bit, I didn't want to interrupt. I actually went with Brian out to the property itself to view the issue itself. And we took note of it. I think there were even some pictures taken of the direction the water was going, where it should be going. And I believe the water master was going, his intent was to get in touch with the property owner and make sure that they were in accordance with their water rights. And that was the direction it was going, whereas at the moment, I can have not spoken about it in about a week and a half.
Oh, you're following up on that?
Yeah, I was following up on it. I just didn't want to interrupt you and interject too much. So, hopefully, that will be resolved. It would be nice to see the property owner make sure that their neighbors have their full water right. But where it's, where it will end up, who knows? But we don't intend to let it go.
Yeah, so does our chair, which is, this is kind of where we were brought in. Leroy, do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Just to fund my comment, it seemed like one of these transfers was probably right. Things like that, there was not a structure that everyone knew that would be followed. And this brought up about five or six issues that seemed to be slipping through the cracks. Possibly some unethical things done that should have been discovered before the land commission voted on it. And the fact that the land commission had their vote in Climate Falls on a Tuesday morning at 8 o'clock, out of county, where people could not attend easily. All this adds to some suspicion about the process. And I think the Board of Commissioners have the power and the right and the duty now to set that structure in place so that everybody knows what the requirements are. And Shaylin said, kind of check off the rocks.
You didn't hear that?
I heard that, yeah.
I did. So, I'd rather make it, like, I couldn't get the time off of work to go.
So, we're just, yeah, I don't think we're trying to make, you know, from the get-go, the card establish against any public agency that would want to turn forward by a private land. We're just trying to establish what is the structure, what the process. So that we, so that everything, comments can come forward. And if there's not quite given, we'll look at the comments and fully address some of the items that might be there.
But at this point, you're still thinking about, I'm guessing that the current source is to go use, utilize the planning board as a way to try and find what would be the best course of action moving forward, rather than like, say, creating a second committee?
Well, the Fort Rock Silver Lake Soil and Water Conservation District feels that the planning commission would probably be the most appropriate body because they're already established and they do represent the county in its entirety from south to north.
And they're very familiar with the, they're very familiar with the planning document and guidelines.
Well, I'm trying to continue here. I appreciate where you're going. Have you, as a planning commissioner, put on your planning commission hat, Chaelen? Have you brought this to your board that you work with and monitor board field and the whole on the director that you report to? Is it something that is always supported by the planning commission to take on this?
Well, I think that, so I guess, as a planning commission member, I would say that I think that we have the capacity to, you know, we have our, we generally sometimes meet an hour before our regional meetings and we'll go through training. And so, I think that we do have the capacity to address some of these items in the starting process.
I'm trying to make sure that you guys are, land use goes by statute, by ORS and by law. And that's what you guys are tasked to do, is make land use decisions. On land use, within the land use and what you brought before us, is you're looking at maybe some different verbiage there. So, I'm trying to make sure that it fits for the law you're trying to establish.
Yeah, again, as a planning commission member, I think that, you know, that board is representing different perspectives countywide. And I feel that with our planning director, obviously, being, the individual with the authority for that interpretation of the planning document, I feel that with those two items alone, we would be able to come together and align the approach to set forward immediately with those two issues.
So, going back to the meeting in Climate Falls, why did it happen in Climate Falls?
It's the, I could speak on that a little bit. Oh, Melanie, go ahead.
Well, it wasn't only that decision. They had, I had to find some information on the docket for someone. And they had a bunch of decisions in that region. They held it there because they thought it was regionally accessible for all of the decisions they were.
That was the decision of the Board of Commissioners?
The ODF.
The ODF and W planning commission? Yes. And that was basically what I was going to say, so thank you.
What was Lake County's planning?
Well, it was a property in Lake County. But they decided to hold, the board decided to hold their meeting in plan.
What board?
The ODF.
The ODF, the main commission, that they should keep laying the state government. And they have their meeting in different locations.
I'm just trying to
They have them in different
That's the opposite.
They decided to have them.
I think we have a comment, go back here.
Yeah, Justin, parallel, I'll put it on the planning commission for Shaylen. I was just going to chime in real quick on the, you know, the workload of the planning commission and the ability to review a document for private land acquisition. As far as ORS is going, I think if we're working just to, right now, if we're working just to provide input or guidance back to the commissioners, there's no ORS issue there. As each county commissioner, planning commissioner is appointed by the Board of Commissioners, you guys have the duty to just assign that workload to us right there. And I could be in favor of you just doing that. That was our call.
Other comments? Mr. Johnson, you have a comment?
Yeah. If I'm inappropriate, don't be this shut up. Aight? God, I have a few dozen words to say and they're all negative to the public land in this county. When I went out to Viewpoint in 77, we ran 5,000 pair plus pools, et cetera. ZX today is running the last year of 3,000 head. And they're not all pairs. And they're on the same amount of public land. The spotted owl messed up our logging. When the Forest Service was created, they were created to manage that property to make it a sustained yield indefinitely. And what, we're down to one block, sawnail identified in Lakeview now? I would love to see several counties statewide or otherwise get together with the intention of getting rid of the BLM, federal fish and wildlife, and the Forest Service and save billions of dollars. Give that land and property back to the states and counties to manage for our benefit. There's nothing going on except a big waste of money today in all of that government spending. And I'm out for you enough, if you want to have somebody go argue to another county for you, I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Do you have another comment?
Yeah, one more time, just to build on what the gentleman said. The concern of the Soil and Water District is that Lake County is already in excess of 75% publicly owned and publicly administered in one fashion or the other. That's the concern of the Soil and Water District. We don't want to see that increase and take those private land holdings out for a long time.
Any other comment? So, Justin, so, Justin. You're asking for us to push this forward to the planning commission to review and look at our comprehensive plan and give some guidelines on commission to review and look at our comprehensive plan and give some guidelines on public land acquisition.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I think we, by consensus, we can do that in your direction to our finding director. I think we need to have a discussion with our finding director of what the guidelines are. Well, I'll, I'll make sure that we, we follow what the state rules and everything are. I'm not the finding director.
All right. I think you have consensus with the board, Jaylen, and I will, I, I, I believe that you have consensus with the board. You go ahead and, and direction from the board that the planning commission will look into this and see what they can do. And if, if on their understanding of the O R Ss and the rules, if they see fit to bring a recommendation for the board of commissioners, please do so. And we would love to review it and see where we can go from there.
Could you guidelines on all four?
I'm hoping that that's correct.
That's what this Mr. Nelson said too.
I don't think that, I don't think they wanna do an actual motion, so.
Okay.
But I think we have consensus. And I agree with that. And so if Darlin were here, I think there'd be a lot to do there too.
Yeah, actually, our organization.
It's not even a county at all.
That's all. All right. So with that, after, in the, I'll leave that to the booth.
That'll act as mine.
Do we have any legal updates for open session?
Nothing for open session, one short one for executive session.
Oh, yes, thank you. At, thank you everyone. At eleven, did you have other comments on the budget hearing or any comments on the budget? If there being none, we will close out at eleven seventeen. If there are no comments during this hearing, we will move on to adoption on last P and then do. All right, so with that, we are going to go into executive session under one ninety-two point six six zero two H. If we're meeting in four, thank you everybody. We will come back to the public position. No decision made in the ceremony.
Thank you again.
Oh, my pleasure.